So the following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, amended for 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary as well. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. All microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer or dial star nine if on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time during your questions you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment section only, the public will have four minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via Asbury Park TV or AP TV. Jack, would you please call us to order?
Sure. I'll take the roll. Daniel, I can't see everyone and some people are muted. So if you're muted, thank you. Please unmute yourselves. Christopher Gonzalez, Tim Slick?
Yep.
Thank you. Daniel Harris. Okay, he's absent. Brittany Ashman? Christopher Gonzalez?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Catherine Minervini?
Here.
Bonnie Knox? Absent. Russell Lewis?
Here.
Christopher Avalon?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right. The first thing we have to do is let everybody know that if anyone in the public is here for 306th Avenue, this application will not be heard tonight and will be carried. Jack, do you want to explain?
Yeah, applicant did not get their exhibits in on time under the new regulations and consequently our regulations. All exhibits, applicant exhibits must be on file two days prior to the date of the meeting, so everyone, including members of the public, can look at them. They were not submitted until this morning, therefore there will be no sense to carry forward, so the applicant has consented to an adjournment without further notice. And I understand that the first available date is January 26, 2021. I'm sorry?
That was somebody's-
Hi, Dan. For the record, Dan Harris has arrived. So we'll mark him present.
So-
So I would need a motion and the applicant through counsel, Andy Carras, has agreed to extend any time we need through that date to decide the matter and extend the time within which to act under the MLUO. So with that being said, could I have a motion from someone in a second to carry this?
I will make a motion to carry 306th Avenue to January 26, 2021, without further notice.
I'll second.
Okay. Daniel Harris? Dan, you're muted. Dan, I need you to unmute.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Thank you. Christopher Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you. Jill Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Tim Slick?
Yes.
Catherine Minervini?
Yes.
Thank you. Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. And Christopher Avalon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Matters carried until January 26 of 2021 without further notice.
So that being said, we will move on to the second application for tonight, which is 13 Grand Point Way, 704 Fourth Avenue, Ocean View Developments.
With that, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Gonzalez, I need to see his video, his video portion. I don't know how to get him on my screen here. Maybe AP TV can help me there.
If you just talk, it'll go to your face.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That didn't work. Okay, Christopher, do you have that certification for this application that I sent you this afternoon?
Actually, for some reason, my phone just kicked me out from my logging and I have to, it was weird, the whole day I didn't receive no emails and everything, and I just realized that I have about 250 emails. One of them is the certification that I'm trying to print right now and my printer is not working.
Okay, well, then what I'll do is, can you so certify that you've listened to the tapes or viewed the tapes and looked at the exhibits from the last meeting on October 30? This matter?
Yes, on October 30th, I left actually 15 minutes before the end.
Right.
And I listened to the other two people through the YouTube video.
Okay, that's fine. So tomorrow, when you can print, I'd like you to print, I'm gonna need to, if I could see you sign it in my presence now, I can witness your signature, but not being able to see you tomorrow, I'll just accept your certification, it's on the record. I'm satisfied with that.
I mean, I can print it through the whole meeting, so-
Please sign it, send me a copy. Send a copy to both Mark Siegel and Michelle Alonso, since they're sitting in as Secretary and Assistant to the Board.
Will do.
Okay, so you're eligible to participate and vote on this matter, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, why don't we have-
Before we proceed, Jack, I do have to remind everyone that Russell is recused from this application.
Okay, that is true, okay.
Night, y'all. Have a fun time.
Thank you, Russell. Take care. And thanks, Christopher, and once we get going with Mr. Santori giving us a little intro and he swear, we'll have a swearing, his first witness, I'll swear in our staff professionals as well.
Okay, let's turn it over to Mr. Santori now.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have our planner that's going to be testifying, which is Mr. Brian Leff. Prior to that, just as a way of introduction, obviously, one of the questions the Board had had over the course of time was, or a concern, a point of concern dealt with specifically site water runoff and the amount of the design for dry well systems or otherwise. Well, as time has marched on, we have done certain things that would be done as part of any type of final building approval or stuff through the building department, so we've done soil logs over at the property and we can affirmatively represent that we could adhere to matching the existing sites runoff for all storms up to and including the 10-year storm event, which I know was a question the Board had had. So the existing site runoff would be matched for the new development up to the 10-year storm based upon what we can design it to. And I just wanted to put that on the record so the Board would know, and obviously, we would deal with that with the engineering department and clearing those conditions, but just at least for edification. As far as you know, where we've been, obviously, we've covered a lot of ground over the prior three meetings and hopefully, we can get Mr. Leff through tonight and we'd like to be able to see if we can get a vote on this particular application and that would be our goal for this evening, so without really further ado, if we could bring on Mr. Leff, I haven't seen him on my screen here, but I do know he should be somewhere out there.
I do not see-
I am here, but I logged on with Mr. Santori's invite and I am listed as August Santori as well.
Ah, there you go.
Yeah. Is everyone, can everybody see the gentleman?
Yeah, I see him.
Okay, now how about the members of the Board?
Yes, I can see him.
Okay, as long as everyone can see him.
The arrows, do you see the blue arrows?
Blue arrows? I see these arrows, wait a second here.
You can scroll through and see.
Yeah, but if they turn off the you know, the screen sharing, then-
Yeah.
Review.
Yeah. Gallery view and then-
Gallery, yeah.
You can also make that, there's the little lines at the bottom, you can drag it and kind of make it bigger so you could see more people and then scroll through.
First best view.
That- Hold on a second here.
Andy of AP TV, can you change his listing to his correct name?
Jack, are you in full screen?
Yeah, I thought so. All I can see is the agenda and a couple of little small snapshots in the right corner. Never had this before, I've always been able to see everyone.
Are you, okay, when you hover over the people that you can see on the upper left, there should be like the different, there's like a small-
Right.
There's like a little grid, are you clicked on that?
I am now.
Okay, now go to the bottom of the big box, there's like little markings in the corner, in the lower right-hand corner, do you see that? When you hover on it?
No, but I can see the gentleman now, I can see him. Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, I tried to help too.
Yeah, well, thank you, Brittany as well. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, and Donna and Dory and everyone all the way down the line, I appreciate it. Okay, Brian, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Brian Leff, L-E-F-F.
Okay, and before you start to testify or we lay some groundwork for you, I'd like my engineer and planner, board planner, to raise their right hands. Donna and Jason, do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your names and your affiliation with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Jason Fitcher, Board Engineer.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Leff, you're up.
Okay.
Can you just take us through briefly your qualifications and educational background?
Sure. As I mentioned, my name is Brian Leff, I am currently the President of BML Studio. I'm a licensed professional planner and landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I provide a testimony on numerous variances throughout the state at multiple boards, including Asbury Park.
Oh, we accept your credentials, thank you, Mr. Leff.
Okay, thank you very much. For my presentation-
I guess just real quick, Brian, you've obviously had an opportunity, you've been present at all the meetings, you've had a chance to listen to all the different testimony, the neighbors, the Board feedback, and and you're prepared to give a synopsis of that this evening in terms of from a planning perspective, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, sorry, Brian, go ahead.
Sorry, if I may, I'd like to share my screen, just put up an exhibit with some photos of the immediate area kind of in the background as I'm going through my presentation and kind of add a little context to what it is that I'm saying. So with the Board's permission, I'd like to do that.
Please do.
Okay, looks like-
Sorry, before you start, I have a question for you, did you say you're PP or AICP?
PP, Professional Planner, yes. Yes. Okay. It's like my screen sharing is disabled by the host. It's possible to get that, otherwise, I'll just continue without it.
AP TV, can you help?
There we go. All right, can everyone see the screen now?
Yes.
All right, real briefly, what this exhibit is, just some photographs taken of the property itself, the subject tract, and some of the immediate surrounding properties. The red building that's in these, a few of these pictures, is the subject house. The other houses are in the immediate area all along Fourth Avenue. And really, it's intended to just show the character of the neighborhood, particularly as it relates to the driveways and some of the building setbacks. A real brief review, we're here, the tract is known as Block 2805, Lot 5 within the city of Asbury Park, it's commonly known as 704 Fourth Avenue. Subject tract is 7,500 square feet or roughly 0.17 acres. It's currently occupied with an abandoned two-story, single-family residential structure. The tract is located within the R2, two-to-four-family residential zoning district. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the tract with a three-unit residential building with associated off-street parking and landscaping. The proposed use is permitted within the R2 zoning district. While the use is consistent with the development goals of the city, some relief from the land development ordinance is being sought this evening. And that relief includes a buffer width where a minimum of five feet is required and three feet is provided, a driveway setback where a minimum of five feet is required and three feet is provided, minimum parking lot landscape area where a minimum of 10% is required and no internal landscape is provided, and a maximum building cover of 25% is permitted where 26.7% is proposed. Now, the application also includes the elimination of a few existing non-conformities, and these included an existing side yard setback variance along the western property line where six-foot setback distance is required and now proposed, and a 1.3-foot setback is existing. And the roof lines of the two houses are even closer. The existing front yard setback of 24.5 feet will also be revised to 25 feet to meet the required front yard setback. Now, looking at the requested variance, the first one I'd like to address is the building cover, where 25% building cover is permitted and 26.7% is proposed. The exceedance is caused by the addition of the front porch and individual decks, these are not the enclosed building spaces. The addition of front porch helps maintain the character of the neighborhood as all houses in the immediate vicinity contain covered front porches. Having outdoor decks provides individual outdoor spaces for the residents. As evidenced by a current health crisis, having individually socially-distanced spaces is a benefit to the residents and to the community. As noted in the planning review, many of the surrounding buildings contain bays on the east side of the house. The proposed balconies serve a similar purpose as the bays, they provide architectural definition and ornamentation and provides views towards the ocean. Proposed porch and decks do not increase the intensity of the use on the site. In my professional opinion, the addition of the porch and decks enhances the aesthetics, maintains the character of the community, and could provide some health benefits. The benefits of granting this variance outweigh any negative impacts that would be realized. The next variance is for the buffer width and driveway setback. Now, although these represent two separate areas of the land use ordinance, the deviation from these requirements relates to the same plan condition, so their justification is the same, and I'd like to address them both together. A parking area buffer and driveway setback of five feet is required for any off-street parking area located adjacent to a residential use, whereas the proposed driveway and parking area are located three feet from the property lines. Similarly, while some of the parking area does provide a five-foot landscape buffer, the majority is located approximately three feet from the property line. While relief is being sought, the proposed condition is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. In many cases, driveways appear to physically touch the residential structures on both sides. The proposed driveway will provide more than five-foot separation to the nearest adjacent structure. All portions of the parking area and driveway will be screened from adjacent properties through existing and proposed fencing. The difference between providing a three-foot and five-foot area will not be perceptible from any of the affected properties. As fences currently exist on all property lines, the ground-level view from the adjacent properties will also not be altered. Adequate screening is provided to prevent headlights from shining onto any of the adjacent properties. Many of the surrounding multifamily structures contain a long driveway, which may satisfy the off-street parking requirements with cars parked linear within the driveway area. However, only one vehicle has access to the road under that scenario and usually results in residents occupying on-street parking. The proposed condition allows for residents to easily enter and exit the property without the need for on-street parking. Providing the necessary off-street parking in a functional manner reduces the man for on-street parking, and this is a community benefit. In my professional opinion, the proposed condition is consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the benefits of granting this variance outweigh any negative impacts. Next, I'd like to look at the minimum parking area landscape. The land development ordinance requires all parking areas of five parking spaces or more to include a minimum landscape area equivalent to 10% of the parking area, whereas the proposed parking area does not contain any interior landscaping. While the landscape area is not provided within the curbed parking area, an equivalent landscape area is provided around the perimeter. Providing a landscape area within the curbed parking lot would cause the parking area to expand and spaces to be located closer to the property lines. This would increase the magnitude of the variances that are being sought for the buffer width. And it may also cause difficulties with internal site circulation as vehicles would need to maneuver around the landscape plantings. The small parking area does not represent a large expanse of pavement which needs to be broken up either visually or environmentally. The proposed condition is similar to the conditions exhibited on adjacent Lot 11. In my professional opinion, the proposed condition provides an equivalent and appropriate landscape area around the perimeter, remains consistent with the surrounding community and meets the intent of the ordinance. In connection with this application, I reviewed the 2017 Asbury Park Master Plan and Master Plan Reexamination Report and offer the following. Planning goal of 5.1.2.1, protect and enhance the quality and enjoyment of the city's residential neighborhoods through policy and regulation that promotes quality of life and minimizes the negative impacts from the city's tourism and other economic development activities. The proposed development will result in the construction of a new residential structure consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. This will preserve the quality of life and character of the community. The development will also provide adequate off-street parking for the residents, which will reduce the on-street parking demand. This minimizes the impact from the city's tourism activities. In my professional opinion, this goal will be advanced by the proposed development. Planning goal 1.2.2 states, provide for a variety of housing types for all income levels throughout the city. The proposed development provides a three-unit residential structure consistent with the land use ordinance and the intent for the development in this area. In my professional opinion, this application advances this goal of the master plan. And planning goal 5.1.2.14 is to promote a healthy and active community where habits such as walking, biking, eating fresh foods, and spending time outdoors are easy, safe, and convenient. The subject tract is approximately 100 feet from the Main Street redevelopment district and provides easy pedestrian access to a variety of restaurants with fresh food and entertainment experience. Tract is within reasonable walking or biking distance to open spaces throughout the city, including the boardwalk and the entire waterfront redevelopment area. In summary, the proposed development provides a three-unit residential structure in an area with easy, safe, and convenient pedestrian and biking access to a variety of restaurants, open spaces, and unique Asbury Park experiences. In my professional opinion, the proposed development will also advance this master plan goal. And finally, urban development design objective 5.3.1.3 is to ensure infill development complements the context and qualities of adjacent neighborhoods with an appropriate scale, mass, and character. The proposed building has been designed to fit into context of the existing neighborhood. It's my professional opinion, this application will also advance this objective. Next, we took a look at the municipal land use law, which contains specific purposes which are intended to guide and coordinate development throughout the state. These purposes must also be considered when evaluating the merits of any variance. A purpose A of the municipal land use law is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. The Asbury Park zoning ordinance itself was established to be consistent with the purposes of the municipal land use law. The proposed development provides a three-unit residential structure on a conforming lot. As proposed use is consistent with the zoning ordinance, it would advance this purpose of the municipal land use law. Purpose B is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. The subject tract is not located within a flood hazard area. Residential housing will be provided in an area safe from routine flooding. The proposed development will result in an increased setback to the adjacent structure to the west. This will reduce the chance of fire spreading from one structure to another. Providing individual outdoor spaces for each unit could be helpful in controlling the spread of infectious disease while maintaining the opportunity for residents to get fresh air in a socially-distanced manner. As the proposed development is not particularly prone to flooding, will be less prone to fire spread, and will provide some protection from infectious disease, this goal is advanced. Purpose C is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. The proposed development will increase the setback to the residential structure to the west and conform to all setbacks in the R2 zoning district. Under the current conditions, the two structures are separated by mere inches. The proposed structure will provide a six-foot setback to the western property line. This is significant improvement and is consistent with the R2 side yard setback requirements. As the proposed development will result in increase in light, air, and open space provided to the adjacent property and comply with all setback requirements of the R2 zoning district, this goal will be advanced. Purpose E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions and preservation of the environment. The proposed development is consistent with the density requirements for the R2 zoning district. The R2 zone is identified in the Asbury Park zoning ordinance as a two, three, and four-family residential zone. The proposed development provides a three-family structure consistent with this designation. As the proposed development conforms to the prescribed density for the R2 zone, it's my professional opinion that the development would advance this purpose of the municipal land use law. And finally, purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Proposed development will comply with all building setback regulations for the R2 zoning district. This results in consistent development pattern along the street corridor. Although the proposed structure has been designed to accommodate three units, only a single entrance is provided along the street front. This helps the multifamily structure blend with the surrounding structures. The existing structure on the tract is abandoned with boarded windows and an overall neglected appearance. The removal of the dilapidated structure and replacement with a new structure which conforms to all setbacks, height, and dimensional requirements will enhance the appearance of the immediate neighborhood. As proposed development will be visually compatible with the character of the neighborhood, this goal will be advanced. So in conclusion, the applicant is proposing to redevelop Block 2805, Lot 5, commonly known as 704 Fourth Avenue with a three-unit residential structure and associated improvements. While the development represents a conforming use within the R2 zoning district, some relief from the Asbury Park land development ordinance is being sought. In my professional opinion, the relief being sought may be granted without negatively impacting the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the community. Notwithstanding the relief being sought, the proposed development is consistent with the land use goals outlined in the Asbury Park Master Plan and will promote several purposes of the municipal land use law. In my professional opinion, the relief being sought may be granted without substantially impairing the intent or goals of the zoning ordinance or master plan. And that summarizes my direct testimony, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions for you, Mr. Leff. Does anybody on the Board have any questions for Mr. Leff's testimony?
I just have a question for Donna. Donna, what's your most recent planning report? Because I know we weren't sent one for this application, is it September 3rd?
I'm sorry, Brittany, what was the date you got?
September 3rd. Because I know they came on October-
That's the most recent one, Brittany.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Leff? Do Board Professionals have any questions for Mr. Leff? Jason?
Sorry, new button, no questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess we'll open it up to the public. Please, AP TV, choose someone if their hand is raised. I believe we have one person with a hand raised. Please direct your questions based on Mr. Left's testimony. Please provide your name and address.
Yes, my name is John Pickart. I live at 701 Fourth Avenue. I live immediately across the street from the subject property. Mr. Left, thank you for your detailed testimony with regard to the planning issues. I had a few questions for you. You testified about the fact that you thought that granting a variance to allow for more than 25% building coverage on this lot was in keeping with the neighborhood. Are there particular properties on this block that you were relying upon in your conclusion that that type of, you know, variance would be in keeping with the neighborhood?
Actually, my testimony for the building coverage was more to do with the fact that the the building, the portions of the building that are causing the exceedance, that are causing the variance, are the individual decks that are provided outside and the covered front porch. So the key to that testimony is that since these are not covered buildings, they're not enclosed spaces, they don't really contribute to the building mass, which is usually what the building coverage is intended to regulate. The other portion, the other prong to that was that by providing the outdoor spaces, it does provide certain community benefits. Overall, my testimony is that this project is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, not necessarily that one particular variance.
Okay, and so you are not testifying that the bulk of this building in relationship to its lot is in keeping with the bulk of the buildings in relation to the neighboring lots. Is that right?
I think it's consistent in the sense that when you view it from the streetscape, the building width, the setbacks, the building spacing is extremely consistent. I'm not testifying that the other buildings in the area are of the same size because I did not do any kind of a study as to what size those building footprints are or what the building coverages are on any of the adjacent lots. However, when looking at aerial views and when looking at the streetscape, and you can see it in the pictures that I'm providing in the exhibit, the character of the neighborhood will largely be preserved.
You also testified with respect to some of the variances concerning the parking and the provision for a parking lot at the rear of the unit. Are you here to testify that there are, you know, other houses in the neighborhood that have similar amounts of parking in the rear of the building such that this would be consistent with the character in the immediate vicinity of this subject property?
When I studied the area, I looked at aerial photographs and I also walked around the blocks. I did notice adjacent Lot 11, which is kind of catty cornered to the back of this property, has a very similar layout. I don't know the exact number of parking spaces that they're providing, but they do provide a driveway that comes off of the street and then parking spaces at 90 degrees through that driveway behind the lot or behind the structure itself with very similar buffers and setbacks to all property lines. So it's almost the identical condition as Lot 11.
And what street is that lot facing onto?
Oh, that would be Third.
Okay, so with respect to Fourth Avenue where my house is, for example, and where a lot of the other neighboring houses are, you're not aware of any building along Fourth Avenue that's in keeping with having that type of substantial parking lot at the rear of the building, right?
No, most properties along Fourth that I saw have a linear driveway that extends from the front of the property almost to the back property line in a straight fashion. And while it may provide adequate off-street parking for vehicles when they're stacked in there, only one vehicle can access the street at a time, which makes them very impractical. So this allows for all vehicles on the lot to have access to the road at all times.
Now, you also provided testimony about the nature of this property or this project being a three-unit. I don't know if you mentioned it or not, but it would be nine-bedroom, you know, three-unit, you know, project. And I think you testified that you view this overall as being consistent with the goals of the city and also being consistent with the master plan. Your testimony is based upon the fact that this is an R2 zoning district, correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, now, the master plan, did you review section 5.2.1? I believe it's the, actually, I'm sorry, 5.2.2, land use recommendations?
I did.
Okay, and did you review the section of 5.2.2 that deals specifically with the neighborhood that the subject property is in?
I did. I'm not sure. I don't remember. I don't remember the master plan word for word. But I did review that section of the master plan. If there's a question I could answer it about, I'd be happy to.
Sure, when you reviewed it, did you review the text that referenced the trend in this neighborhood of two and multifamily homes converting back to one-family homes in the predominant single-family character of the neighborhood? Did you review that section?
I did, but that seemed to refer to the eastern portion of the R2 zone. This is one of the furthest western properties within the R2 zone, and I didn't feel that that comment was applicable to this property.
This actually property is in that zone, though, isn't it?
It is in the zone, but that particular comment refers to properties in the eastern part of the R2 zone specifically. And this is in the western part.
Now, that entire zone was subject to a recommendation in the master plan to replace the R2 zoning with R1 single-family district zoning for this neighborhood, correct?
Again, that was a recommendation for the eastern portion of the zone, not for the entire zone.
That has not been adopted yet, Mr. Pickart.
Well, can I ask a question on that very point, and I appreciate that. But there was testimony that this is consistent with the goals of the city. And did you, Mr. Left, are you aware of the fact that the city council on August 12th of this year passed Resolution 2020-238 that deals specifically with these recommendations?
I'm aware of all regulations that were applicable to this application at the time that the application was made.
I understand that this is not applicable at the time the application was made, but you testified as to the goals of the city, and I'm asking you.
I testified as to specific goals, and I enumerated each goal and explained why this advanced those goals.
And are you aware, sir, that in August of this year, the city council passed an ordinance in which it stated the mayor and the council wish to proceed with the adoption of an ordinance to amend the city's existing zoning map in order to effectuate the recommendations made by the planning board?
If that was adopted in August, it's not applicable to this application.
I understand, sir, that it is not technically applicable, but when you talk about the goals of the city, did you consider the fact that the city council and the mayor have now proposed adoption of a different zoning designation for this neighborhood that would turn it to R1?
I considered all the regulations that are applicable to this application and were in place at the time of the application.
So is it correct, sir, that you did not consider the fact that the city council and the mayor have proposed adopting a different zoning designation for this neighborhood and considering whether this is in keeping with the evolving character of this neighborhood?
Once more, that is not an applicable regulation.
I guess I would just object to the relevance of it since we already understand that this is not a zoning variance for use purposes. It's permitted use, so I'm not even sure.
Sustained, Mr. Centauri, sustained.
Is it correct, sir, that one of the variances that is being sought is a density variance?
No.
You don't believe that there's a density variance?
No, the original application did apply for a density variance. However, in the very first application, very first hearing for this application, that was discussed. And because the lot size is appropriate and meets the zoning requirements for a three-unit building, there is no density variance.
What is the dwelling units per acre that's permitted in the R2 zone?
I don't have that right in front of me.
Seventeen units, correct, sir?
I don't have that information right in front. In fact, let me stop sharing my screen and see if I can get that off of the site plan for you.
I guess, Mr. Avalon, just to interject a moment, whether Ms. Miller wants to weigh in on this or Mr. Serpico, but this issue was already addressed. As Mr. Left indicated, it's really not for him to testify to one way or another. It was a determination that was made by the board early on.
Sustained, Mr. Centauri. Perhaps Donna could reiterate. Donna?
Sorry, had the wrong hand on the wrong mouse. Donna Miller here, the board planner. Yes, at the first public hearing, we had a rather detailed discussion about the use, the actual understanding of the use, and the application of the density requirement. So the maximum permitted density is 2,500 square feet, I'm sorry, 17 dwelling units per acre, which works out to 2,500 square feet per unit. They have three units on, what is that? I'm sorry, 7,500 square feet, which is what is, you know, the math bears out. There's a, like a de minimis 62-square-foot, you know, rounding that occurs. It's not applicable in this case. It's effectively 17 dwelling units per acre, three units on 7,500 square feet.
There is no density variance required.
No variance for density required.
Okay, thank you.
And again, to clarify, the applicant amended his application so that there is no longer a floor area ratio variance required either.
Thank you.
That's why Mr. Left didn't even address that concern.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Then I will reserve the rest of my comments or questions in respect of, you know, density to the comments on the application overall during the public comment section.
Thank you, Mr. Pickart. AP TV, do we have anyone else in the public who would like to question Mr. Left?
Hello, Peter Connolly, 714 Fourth Avenue.
Please proceed, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Left. Thank you for your testimony. It was speedy, but it was thorough. I just want to clarify on the building coverage again. You testified that the reason it's over the amount is because of the outdoor space, the decks, the porch. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How did you determine that that particular structure is what puts it over the limit?
Because if we take the area of the covered porch out and we take the area of the individual decks out, it complies with the ordinance.
What if you took the area of the third unit out?
I did not look at that. That's not.
So you don't have.
That's not what I was asked to review.
Your testimony is that it's over because of the outdoor space, but any of the other space was not inspected or thought about in that consideration?
No, it was thought about, and in fact, we had reduced the building size from what was originally proposed. What you're seeing now represents a smaller building than what was previously and originally proposed.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just asking how you came to the determination that what puts it over the allotted amount is the outdoor space. I mean, you're making, you're drawing a comparison, right? You're drawing a comparison. You're leading us to believe that's why it is, but it could really be anything. It could be the third bedroom or, you know, whatever. It could be.
Ask a question, please. Excuse me, Mr. Connolly. I got your point, and I think more does as well.
Great. How, with regards to the linear driveways in the neighborhood, you said most of the buildings in the neighborhood have a linear driveway that runs from the front of the property to the back of the property. Is that a fair restatement of your testimony?
Yes.
How did you determine most?
I walked up and down the street.
And you magically knew that it was.
And that's the exact condition that was shown in the exhibit that I had up during my testimony, was all of the driveways showing that there is no parking area behind the buildings. They're just straight driveways. Whether they go all the way to the back property line or not, that I can't testify to. I'm assuming that most of them appear to go back pretty far, and during my investigation, there's typically two to three cars parked in many of them.
I was just really trying to ask the question, what is most, like, is there a number, right?
No, it was a predominant feeling as I walked down the street that this is how the driveways are laid out.
Okay, well, I, you know, if I went, I would probably see something different. Okay, and let me see if there's another one. Nope, that was it. Those are my questions. I appreciate it.
Christopher, you're muted. Christopher Avalon?
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. AP TV, do we have anyone else with a raised hand?
Hello?
AP TV?
Looks like city historian is listed, but he's muted.
There we go. Unmute. Thank you. Am I there?
Yes, yes.
Hey, great. I didn't hear any discussion about the local.
Mr. Baumgartner, please.
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Warner Baumgartner, city historian, Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't hear any discussion about the other doors. I heard some testimony about the front door, a singular front door on the front porch facing the street. I didn't hear any testimony about the side door.
Mr. Baumgartner, you have to direct your questions to his testimony.
Okay, could you address the side doors, please? Is there anything in the zoning code that prohibits primary entrance doors?
That's not part of his testimony.
He testified to doors.
No, he didn't.
He did not.
You want to rewind?
The front porches and side porches. He didn't talk about doors.
He mentioned the front door.
No, he didn't.
You want to rewind the tape? Of course he did.
Well, if I, Mr. Left, did you talk about the front door?
I mentioned the front. There is a single front door which gives the appearance of a single-family house as opposed to a multifamily.
I'm sorry, Mr. Baumgartner, my mistake. My apologies.
Thank you very much. What I'm asking is, is the witness aware of any zoning regulation that prohibits primary entrance doors facing a side yard?
Not for three-family residential structures, no.
Even in a designated historic district?
Anywhere in the zoning ordinance. I didn't see any restrictions.
Okay, I would call your attention to the zoning section entitled "Community Design Regulations" where that prohibition is mentioned. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. AP TV, do we have anyone else in the public to question Mr. Left? Hello?
Anyone? Whoever JIT CEO is.
My name is Jitio, and I live on 703 Fourth Avenue, which is the house directly opposite of the building.
Okay.
And this is kind of a follow-up question to Mr. Baumgartner's question about entrances. It seems like there's a driveway, and it's a pretty narrow driveway by any standards. And all of the entrances, exits to each unit, is on the side of the building. So are there any sort of safeguards for, you know, the occupants' safety? Is there a sidewalk that would?
Okay, that's not part of Mr. Left's testimony. It's not his job to talk about those conditions.
We were talking about entrances, you know, to the buildings.
Mr. Left is a planner. He's not an engineer or an architect. Mr. Leff is a planner. He, he's not an engineer or an architect.
Okay, fine. So is there an opportunity for me to ask this later on?
Unfortunately, only if the engineer or, or architect comes back.
They already provided testimony on all this.
They have already.
I'll reserve my comments for later then. Um, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. AP TV, do we have anybody else in the public?
Here appears.
Hello?
Okay, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name's Chuck Habrel. I live at seven oh three Fourth Avenue.
Okay, great, thanks.
Uh, I had a question about the covered porch. We discussed this. Uh, you claim that the covered porch contrib-, this is addressed to Mr. Leff, of course. The covered porch was required, um, was contributing to the, uh, the variance that is being sought, correct?
For the building covered, yes.
Yes. Uh, I was under the impression, I may be mistaken, so please correct me if I'm wrong, that the covered porch was required to avoid seeking yet another variance regarding the setback from the street. Is that correct?
The covered porch adds context to the community since just about every house on the block, maybe every house on the block has a covered porch. It was strongly advised that we include a covered porch. That was the reason for covering it initially. Um, it does happen to eliminate the front yard setback because covered porches are permitted in the front yard. However, we previously had an uncovered porch. That was the same area that did require a front yard setback. So in some, in one sense, yes, the covered porch did eliminate a six-inch variance that we were previously proposing. However, that was not the driving force behind covering.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I wanted to go back to the seven images that you provided because, um, most of them are, of course, of the property at, uh, seven oh four Fourth Avenue, but, uh, there were a few there that had driveways in them, and they all seem to be without any setback from the adjacent property line. Is it in fact the case that the driveways on this block are predominantly not set back from the property line, or is that not the case?
That was my observation, and that was the purpose of that exhibit.
Okay, I, I mean, I have a driveway, actually, exact, facing the property at seven oh, uh, uh, seven oh four Fourth Avenue, and ours is setback from the adjacent property line. I was wondering why you decided not to include that image in your, in your exhibit.
Some of the driveways in fact do. I could, I don't know where, when you're looking at a property from the street, it's almost impossible to tell where exactly a property line is. You oftentimes assume it's right in the middle of two structures or in the middle of a swell, but that's not always the case. So just by looking at structures, I was not able to tell if something had a three-foot setback or a five-foot setback that actually complied. The images that I'm showing show the, the improvements clearly touching built, buildings on both sides or clearly touching a property line and clearly do not meet the ordinance requirement. And the purpose of showing those was to demonstrate that this is not the only property on the block that's going to have a variant condition as far as the driveway setback. It doesn't mean that every driveway on the street is, but there are, certainly are plenty of them that are.
Okay, that's fair. Um, turning to that issue of the, the character of the neighborhood and to the degree to which this, uh, development matches that character and, and perhaps even enhances it, I was wondering exactly how many other townhouse-style structures there are in the neighborhood in, in the R2 zone or even on this block.
Excuse me, it's been determined that it's not a townhouse-type structure.
Uh, what sort of structure is it?
Yes, based on, based, to answer your quest, I think, to answer your question, we did look at the tax map or tax records, and nearly every property on this block is a multifamily structure.
I don't know that there are very many multifamily units on this block. How many, how many, how many of these, uh, structures currently on the block actually house multifamilies?
According to the tax records, most of them.
I don't think that's accurate at all. I mean, I know this neighborhood fairly well, and I, I don't believe that.
You're commenting, Mr. Habrel. You're commenting.
You, in, in your comments at the end, you can certainly raise that issue, but you can't testify at this point. Yours is to just ask the questions and point out whatever you point out by way of your questions.
Okay, uh, that's fair, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to make the remarks and, uh, make these comments in, in the public comment section. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Habrel. All right. Um, AP TV, do we have anyone else in the public for Mr. Leff?
Appears to be a Mr. Cohen.
Yes, Joel Cohen from Fourth Avenue.
Yes, please. What's your address, Mr. Cohen?
Seven oh eight Fourth Avenue.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Leff, thank you for your testimony. Um, with regards to landscaping, you mentioned that, to accommodate the, the landscaping requirement, it's actually going to be placed on the border of the property to make way for the, um, for the parking lot. Just, just wondering, that, you feel that that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and of the block that it's on?
No, my testimony was that there is an equivalent amount of landscaping around the perimeter of the parking area to meet the requirement. That area also happens to be the buffer and setback area, so I'm not trying to double-use that area, uh, to count for everything. And I'm not, the ordinance specifically requires a specific percentage of landscaping within the interior of the parking area, not around the perimeter. So my testimony was that the, it is a small parking area, providing plants within the parking area on the interior is not recommended. And that, as far as additional plantings are concerned, there are plantings around the outside. That was the extent of the testimony. Not that it, not that it, it keeps in the character, primarily because most properties that I saw, with the exception, I believe Lot 11 was the only one that I noted in this block, uh, they don't have a formal parking area. Everyone parks just in the driveways. Or some of them have detached garages, and I don't know if those garages are used for parking or storage.
Right, okay, thank you. So, so in your observation, would you, would you say that most of the houses have landscaping that's in the center of the property and behind the property, rather than a driveway that, that wraps around or, or just border, let's say, border landscaping?
I would say most properties don't have a parking area.
Right. But to make up for the, for the missing landscaping in that area, then, uh, this plan has, uh, appropriated landscaping for the borders.
I believe this plan has appropriate landscape for what's being proposed.
If I just may interject one quick moment, I, I think maybe there's a misperception on the, uh, Mr. Cohen's behalf. Um, the landscaping in the interior of the property is reflective of strictly dealing with buffer and aisles and that nature. It's not about planting plants in a backyard when, when there's no parking associated with it. So it's not about making up or anything else. It specifically deals with interior aisle width and buffering for parking areas, not about park, not about planting in the middle of a backyard, which is kind of what seems to be he's indicating.
Thank you, Mr. Santori. I think that's, that's probably correct, but also you're probably hearing the, the concern of, um, removal of landscaping for parking lots and what that, what that aesthetic does for the neighborhood and how uncharacteristic that is.
The only landscape that's being removed of any values, there's one tree in the backyard that will come down. The rest of the property is currently void of any significant landscaping.
And three-quarters, and three-quarters of an acre of grass.
That you can't see.
I can see it.
Um, just for the record, the property is, is only seventy-five hundred square feet, so certainly not three-quarters of an acre, just for clarification purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Santori.
Right, that's fine. The, the number was wrong, but you get the point that we're, we're losing a field in our view for a parking.
Mr. Cohen, you're commenting. You're commenting.
Mr. Avalon, thank you. So, okay, so, um, my next question i- is about parking. You, you testified very thoroughly about how the parking will help, um, alleviate, you know, the, the issue of street parking on Fourth Avenue, and as I can attest as a resident, um, it's difficult at best in the off-season. It's very difficult, um, during, during the on-season. So, um, with the three units, I just wanted you to walk me through your thought process on how the, uh, the number of spots will accommodate three living spaces and also your testimony about the, the size of the spots, um, you know, not being able to accommodate, uh, larger vehicles.
Um, I would object to the question because that's not anything with Mr. Leff testified to. The engineer spent plenty.
Sustained, Mr. Santori, sustained. Mr. Cohen, please keep your questions directly related to Mr. Leff's testimony. He did not test, he, he did not testify regarding the parking sizes.
My apologies. So let's just stick with the, the beginning part of, of that question. It was a bit difficult, Mr. Leff. Your, your testimony was thorough, but, but quite, quite fast. And so as trying to jot down notes among the other testimonies, it's just been difficult to keep it all straight. But, but to the first part of the question, you did comment on the fact that, that this will alleviate some of the issues of, of street parking, or you alluded to it and somehow that I'm not characterizing it exactly the right way. But there, there was some, uh, mention of street parking and how this would, would be better. My concern, or my question to you, is of three units of, um, you know, the requirement for, I guess it's a car and a half, or I'm not sure what, what the estimate is. It's certainly at least one car, probably more, because there are three units there. I'm wondering how that would alleviate the issues of parking that we already face.
The plan meets the ordinance's requirements for parking, so we're not seeking any variance for parking. So all required on, off-site, or all-street parking is provided.
Mr. Leff, your testimony. Just to, just to kind of hopefully move this along for Mr. Cohen, I, I think what he's indicating is that in your testimony, you indicated that obviously providing for five onsite parking spaces alleviates the genesis of your testimony. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is that the provision of five on, um, onsite parking spaces therefore reduces off-site parking, correct?
Correct.
And your testimony really isn't anything more than that, correct?
No, simply that we're providing all the required parking onsite so that people aren't parking on the street.
Mr. Cohen, do you have any further questions for Mr. Leff?
I do. Um, the next question relates to coverage. I believe there are raised upstairs decks, and I'm wondering if you feel that that fits within the character of the neighborhood as you've described your knowledge of it.
I do.
You have seen other houses that have out, upstairs outside decks available with lights?
No, but there are other units that have bay windows on that side of the deck and the, on that side of the house, the east side of the house, and the proposed deck serves a very similar ornamentation, architectural purpose as the bay windows would. So in that sense, yes, I do believe it's, it's consistent. And I believe they're on the side of the house, not the front of the house, so it's not as perceptible as you're driving down the street.
That side of the house happens to be very viewable to the street, but you feel that a bay window is the same as a, an outdoor deck with lighting?
No, I think they're different. I think they serve the same architectural purpose.
But I asked about the character of the neighborhood.
And I think it's, and my answer hasn't changed. I do believe that the architecture being proposed is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I believe there's certain health benefits and other benefits of having those decks, and I believe they're appropriate.
You characterize the front door as, uh, the purpose of having an appearance of a single-family home. And the purpose of having a, an appearance of a single-family home is because that's what's in the character of the zone and of this particular block. But it seems that there is this appearance needed because we're actually doing something different.
What we're, what we're doing is a hundred percent consistent with the zoning ordinance. There's no relief being sought for the use.
But not consi-, but, but the need for an appearance of a single-family home is to try and make it appear as if it's one, even though it's not. I'm asking the question, is that, does he agree with that?
What's the question?
You're saying that the need for a front door is to offer the appearance of a single-family home while it's not a single-family home, correct?
No, the, it was to offer consistency throughout the neighborhood. When I walk down the street, almost every house has a single door on the front. We're providing a building that has a single door on the front, so we're providing something very consistent with what's in the neighborhood.
You stated that you reviewed the tax records to make sure that there were other multifamily homes on the block. Can you just walk me through your review of those records?
I do not have that information in front of me now.
Once again, I, I'm not sure of the relevance relative to the fact that there's no use variance being sought.
Agreed, Mr. Santori, sustained.
Mr. Leff, your testimony was, was swift, and so I appreciate that in one respect because it's, it's the evening time, but I'm, I'm just, um, having a hard time making sure I heard everything correctly. And you said that there were many community benefits to the neighbors and to the, the, the plans for Asbury Park, you know, related to walking and access to fresh food and, and other things. Could you walk me through those, please? Just briefly, just, just the, how you feel that this, uh, aligns with those?
Do you want me to go through the whole, my whole testimony again?
No.
I'm, I'm not sure what part of my testimony you want me to re- repeat.
The community benefits to the neighbors.
That's my whole testimony, is about how this project benefits the community and how it supports the, how, how the variances are supported. There's a lot to go over. I, I would need something a little more specific.
Uh, how does this help access to fresh food? How does this help, uh, the ability to promote outdoor activities such as walking and biking?
Okay.
Able to hear, and it just was, was very quick, so I realized there's a lot to go through, but, you know, this is, this is more important to the people on the phone.
It sounds like what you're referring to is Planning Goal 5.1, 0.2, 0.14, which is to promote a healthy and active community where habits such as walking, biking, eating fresh foods, and spending time outdoors are easy, safe, and convenient. Now, to repeat my testimony and support of that, the subject tract is a hundred feet from the Main Street Redevelopment District, which provides easy pedestrian access to a variety of restaurants with fresh food and entertaining experience. It's also within reasonable walking or biking distance to open spaces throughout the city, including the boardwalk and the entire waterfront redevelopment area. So in summary, the proposed development provides a three-unit residential structure, which is permitted in an area with easy, safe, and convenient pedestrian and biking access to a variety of restaurants, open spaces, and unique Asbury Park experiences. In my professional opinion, the proposed development will advance this master plan goal, and that's pretty much what my testimony was on that topic.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I appreciate being able to hear it again. Uh, Mr. Leff, would you welcome the opportunity to survey the block and the area around it again to, as to get a better, better picture for the character of the, uh, the area, given the questions raised?
I, I would. Obviously, we're, we're not going to engage in that at this point in time. Mr. Leff has testified, um, you know.
I was asking Mr. Leff.
I understand, but, but we're seeking a vote this evening. We're not seeking to continue, uh, with an application in perpetuity as it pertains to this, given the fact that once again, irrespective of whatever other property is on this block, we are not seeking a use variance, and I think it's just important to continue to hear that over and over again. It doesn't matter plainly, you know, what else is, because we're not asking for relief from it.
Your point is well taken, Mr. Santori. Mr. Cohen, do you have any other further questions for Mr. Leff?
I don't. Thank you, Mr. Avalon. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Moving on to the next individual, AP TV. Do we have anyone else with their hand raised? And just to remind everyone, we are not, we're not having repeat questioners for Mr. Leff. One time only.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, this is, uh, Lauren.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Lauren Scheller. I'm on Fourth Ave, seven oh eight.
Great, thank you.
Um, so, um, a couple of my questions have already been addressed by the public, so, um, just thank you, Mr. Leff, for, um, addressing all of our questions. Um, can you, um, state again which one, um, is Lot 11?
Lot 11 was located towards the back of our property. If you're looking at it from Fourth Avenue, it's almost catty-corner to the back left of the property, so it would be the southeast corner.
Okay. Um, so my, my window looks out into that, and I'm not aware of a, um, of any, um, parking area in the back of that property. Um, so I'm just, I'm just wondering, um, how you acquired that information?
That shows up on, it shows up on available aerial images.
And how do you classify it as a parking area?
It's clearly shown as a paved area with cars parked in it.
Um, wa- was there a reason you didn't include that image in your testimony? your testimony?
No. Uh, other, other than the, the requirements, the new requirements of submitting things prior to the hearing, uh, it's not something that I can introduce, uh, on the fly.
Oh, okay. So the, the pictures were taken?
Well, be, before the application was submitted, yes.
Um, okay. And then I just, um, I'm just wondering if you can clarify, um, how the increase in, um, I'm sorry, how the outdoor porch, uh, porches um, increase well-being for the neighbors. Um, so like some of the other folks already testified, I, I did struggle taking notes with this testimony, um, which is frustrating. So I'm sorry if I'm misquoting you. I was trying my best, but I just wondering if you could clarify um, what you meant by, by well-being of, um, by adding second-floor porches that look over into yards and homes.
Sure. What we're proposing are small decks that are outside their second-story, small decks for each of the units. Uh, actually, the, the one in the front has the front porch at ground level. It doesn't have an elevated, uh, second-floor deck. Uh, but the back two units will each have an elevated deck. Now, the community benefit is those decks allow the residents to those units to get outside, enjoy some fresh air in a socially distant manner. With today's pandemic, with the pandemic situation that we're in today, it's very obvious that having outdoor spaces that people can enjoy in a socially distant manner is a benefit, both to the residents and to the community.
Um, do you think it's, um, fair to introduce um, COVID restrictions when you're planning for a long-term home that would live beyond something like that?
I think whether it's COVID, the flu, or any other disease that may come along, it's still an experience that you can provide a private outdoor space for the individual homeowners or the occupants.
Okay. And so when we're talking about well-being, we're talking about the well-being of the occupants within the residence, not necessarily their next-door neighbors who might be impeded by the porch.
The fewer people that are out in public the, that may be infected with any disease, not necessarily just COVID, the better off the community is as a whole.
Thank you. Um, you talked about, um, the, this idea of keeping consistent with the neighborhood. Um, and I appreciate all of the testimony. Um, sorry, that's, that's commenting, but, um, do, how, how much, um, did you put into consistency of the neighborhood of the front of the house versus what the, um, surrounding neighbors would see on the side and the rear of the home?
Mr. Ms. Scheller, he, he's the planner. He's not the architect or the engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Avalon.
Okay, thanks. Um, I just, um, I just, um, this idea of well-being of the, the neighbors. I just have a question, you know, that, that's, that's what I'm sort of asking him to comment on. If the, um, how, if the home is different than the surrounding homes.
He's already testified, Ms. Scheller, that it's consistent, in his opinion, with the neighborhood.
Okay, um, and so my question is, is the consistency with the neighborhood the front of the house or the, the sides and the rear of the house?
The architect had given prior testimony, substantial testimony about how the architecture was modified and revised from the initial submission to better conform with the community. Based on his testimony, I thoroughly believe that this.
Mr. Left, you shouldn't, you shouldn't add testimony.
I was just about to, uh, stop him. It's not proper.
You can't answer.
You can't testify on behalf of the architect.
Fine, then I, I can't, I can't answer a question based on the architecture of the building.
Um, I'm not, I'm not actually asking about the architecture of the building, but there was a lot of comments about the consistency of the, the developed property. And so I'm just asking if that's referring to the front of the house or?
And I repeat, Ms. Scheller, he's already testified that it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay.
The consistency refers to the overall plan, not necessarily one individual aspect.
Okay, thank you. Um, you, you, um, had testified that you had trouble, um, seeing some of the properties just based on your walk-around. Um, is it, is it permitted for you to ask neighbors to um, gain access to get a better understanding?
That's not part of his testimony, Ms. Scheller.
Okay, I have, um, no further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. APTV, do we have anyone else in the public for Mr. Left? Please state your name and address for the record.
Edward Baumgarten, 706 Fourth.
Please proceed, Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions, um, from Mr. Left. This is, um, uh, so you've, you've testified that, that this, um, uh, that this, that this project, this application is in character with the neighborhood. I'm assuming that you have done a survey of the, um, the surrounding area and, and, and the block. Uh, is that a good assumption to make?
I visited the property, walked up and down the street, around the blocks, visited the adjacent blocks, and made a personal assessment of how the neighborhood felt to me.
Okay, when you say how, how it felt to you, what, what do you, what do you mean by that? That, that's, uh, that, that's a pretty, um, uh, subjective, uh, thing there.
What I mean is every, every neighborhood has a specific character. This neighborhood has an old historic character to it. What we're proposing is very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
So it has an old historic character. And yet this, okay, and, and, uh, and you think what, 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 what is being proposed fits in with something that is old and historic?
I think what's being proposed once more is consistent with the neighborhood.
Right. And then you said the neighborhood was, was, was old and historic. And I'm asking you if you think that this, that this project, that this application is, fits in with old and historic.
I believe this application fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
Mr. Left, excuse me. We're getting back into architectural.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
That's an architectural question that he cannot answer.
Well, we're talking about character, so I'm not sure what, what, you know, where, where, where that dividing line is. Forgive me if I've, if I've, I've overstepped those bounds.
No, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, uh, all right. So, um, my, my, my second question is, are you, are you, are you familiar with the uh, with, with the master plan of the area?
Yes, I am.
And is that the current one or the, or, or the old one?
The latest adopted.
So the, the latest adopted, which, which, which signifies the area is, is really a one-family area?
No, that has not been adopted, Mr. Baumgarten.
I, I.
Master plan is.
In, in that case, my, my, my information is faulty and.
No, 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 you're not. We're timed out. Let me, let me clarify. The master plan has been adopted. The ordinances that are in effect do not reflect that.
The ordinance that you're, you're, you're asking about for a, an R1 designation has not been adopted yet.
Okay, as I said, then, then my information is faulty. Um, and then I have another question. This is on, you, 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 you would, you, you testified about the well-being. I know that, that, uh, that some of the other people have, um, uh, have, have, uh, have, have touched upon this. And, uh, we're talking about, uh, the, that, that, that this, um, that this proposal will be an improvement to the well-being of the occupants and the neighbors as well. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't really understand what that was, uh, what you were testifying to there.
My entire testimony is to show how the proposed development fits in with the character and how the variances that are being sought do not hurt the public in any way.
Okay, um, was, and, and this, and, um, is this based upon any conversations that you had with the public? Or is this just based upon?
This is based on everything I testified about.
I'm sorry?
So this is based on everything I testified about.
Okay, were any, were, uh, uh, were any opinions of, of, of the public asked by you?
No.
Okay. So all of my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. So that concludes all the public questions for Mr. Left. Thank you, Mr. Left, for your testimony. Mr. Santori, back in your court.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Avalon. Um, at this point in time, we, we have no further, um, witnesses, so.
Okay.
Public comment at this point.
So, uh, do we do public comment or we let Mr. Santori make his closing statement?
I would suggest he makes it after the public comments.
Okay, all right. So let's do that.
Okay.
Um, I need a motion to open it up to the public for comment. Do I have a motion from the board? Somebody gonna unmute themselves?
Second. Chris, oh, did Chris make it?
No, I asked for it.
Oh, I'll make a motion to open it for public hearing.
Great, Brittany, thank you. She seconded it. Okay, um, I think Dan may have done so already, but thank you, Catherine.
Okay.
All, everyone, please take, please unmute yourselves.
All right. So, uh, just for the public's benefit.
Have a vote.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Jack.
Okay, uh, that's why I'm asking everyone to unmute themselves. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, eyes have it. We can open for public comment.
Okay, so to remind the public, you will have four minutes to make a public comment, either for or against this application.
Okay, and we need, um, APTV.
APTV.
Timer. Could APTV please unmute themselves? Cause I know, I don't know if they're timing it or not.
APTV, can you set up the timer for four minutes per person?
Yep, bringing it up right now.
Anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have four minutes to comment either for or against this application.
Yeah, and I will swear you in. And we need to see the, is APTV tracking this now?
Well, we can't see the four-minute timer. Can we see it?
Yes, soon as I unmute them, I'll bring up the timer, but it'll start counting right away.
Okay, all right. So let's have our first, uh, member of the public come forward, please.
Hi, um, this is Lauren Scheller again, um.
Okay, Lauren, before you, before you testify.
Well, I just, I just was wondering if there's any way that we can, um, break for five minutes and collect our, our new thoughts based on this new testimony to make sure that.
That, Ms. Ms. Scheller, that's really not your place to ask that.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. This, this is just, um, you know, really important.
If you want to, you, you can come back.
Okay.
Yeah, you can come back.
Thank you. I'll do that. Thanks.
Okay, all right. So can we get first member of the public, please? Mr. Hunt, is that Mr. Hunt?
That's correct. Can you hear me?
Okay, okay. Please, uh, state your name for the record and your address, and I'm going to swear you in because you're basically going to be testifying.
That's great. My name is Ray Hunt. My address is 710 Fourth Avenue, Asbury Park.
Okay, please raise your right hand, sir, even though I cannot see you. I'll take your word for it.
It's raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak in opposition to tonight's variance request for 704 Fourth Avenue. I have to say that I am not surprised by the number of my neighbors on the block who also feel strongly that this development is not additive to our community. Though I agree with and could probably reiterate the comments of my neighbors, I will focus my comments on the desired zoning of our block that was proposed by the master plan adopted by the city council on December of 2017. Professionals who look at Asbury Park and recommend land uses for the entire city propose that Fourth Avenue between Main Street and Byrd should be an R1 zone where we had been previously zoned as R2. What that says to me and my neighbors is that a three-unit apartment building that covers the entire lot at 704 is not in the spirit of the long-term desires of our block. It is also my understanding that the city council on October 5th passed a resolution indicating their desire to proceed with the adoption of an ordinance to amend the city's existing zoning map to accom, uh, accompany zone and boundary changes in order to invoke the recommendations made by the planning board in regards to the master plan. This resolution includes the zoning recommendations for the block that we all live on from an R2 zone to an R1 zone. The master plan has been adopted for almost three years and allowing a development that strays from the overarching plan for this neighborhood would go against the desires of our city and particularly the community that this development would impact. It is important to note that the density in this neighborhood is important to its residents. In very short time, we will be adding 111 units within two blocks of the proposed development on 704 Fourth Avenue. 108 units at Fourth and Memorial and four units on Fourth and Main. It is important to me and I believe our neighbors to maintain the complexity of our neighborhood, which is primarily single-family units. We as a community have purchased and rehabilitated properties and would welcome a purchaser that planned to be a part of this community instead of changing it, in my opinion, for the worst. Thank you for your time.
Is that your complete testimony, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hunt?
I do not.
Okay, let's, uh, move on to the next person.
APTV, please call the next person.
Hi, it's, uh, Jonathan Pickard, uh, 701 Fourth Avenue.
Okay, Jonathan, please raise your right hand and I'll take your word for it if you tell me you've done it.
I have.
Okay, do you solemnly swear the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I, I do.
Okay, and you are Jonathan Picard and you live at what address on Fourth?
701 Fourth Avenue.
Okay, the floor is yours. Thank you.
And, uh, and thank you, uh, to the board for all of its, you know, patience with respect to this application. Uh, I am here to, uh, testify in opposition to the application as you are hearing from many of the surrounding neighbors to the, uh, to the subject property. Uh, you know, I first, uh, bought my home at 701 Fourth Avenue in 2001. Uh, and in, at that point, many of the homes in the neighborhood were boarded up and there were also a lot of multifamily homes, uh, at, at that time. Uh, my home, in fact, had been a four-family, uh, home and I converted it to a single-family home. Uh, I have, uh, owned two other residences, you know, you know, homes in the, in the neighborhood. Uh, one at, uh, 1205 Bond, uh, which I still own, and I also owned, uh, 703 Fourth uh, at one point in time. 703 Fourth used to be a three-family home. Now it is a single-family home. Uh, you know, Mr. Uh, Hunt very eloquently described, uh, what was recognized uh, by the master plan as being the evolving trend in this neighborhood, which in their words is the trend of two and multifamily homes converting back to one-family homes and described a predominantly single-family character for this neighborhood. Uh, that is not some abstraction. That is actually the lived experience of the people who uh, are here today opposing, uh, this application. Uh, this particular block, uh, has been, uh, lovingly, uh, you know, restored by a bunch of very dedicated homeowners, many of whom who have taken multifamily homes uh, and have turned them, you know, back to single-family, uh, homes, and that is the character of the neighborhood. What is being proposed here is an application that would buck that trend and a few short months from now would actually not be permitted under the city's, you know, zoning ordinances. You understand that that zoning ordinance is not applicable today. This is grandfathered in, but you nonetheless as a board can take into account whether this is consistent or inconsistent with the goals of the city. And the goals of the city are reflected in ordinance 2020, 2038, 238, where the city council indicated that the goal for this neighborhood is to head towards single-family homes. Now, in addition to the fact that a three-family home is just not in and of itself in keeping with the neighborhood, this particular project is also out of keeping, uh, with the neighborhood. The bulk of the building is, uh, in excess of the bulk of the buildings, uh, surrounding it. The form of the structure, uh, while technically not a townhouse, this looks like a townhouse. Uh, and there are no other homes around here that look like townhouses, these are all, you know, standard, you know, single-family, mostly colonial homes. Uh, the second-floor decks, which you have, have heard about, uh, there's no other homes in this neighborhood that have second-floor, uh, you know, decks, that is completely out of keeping with this neighborhood. The parking lot at the back of the house is also out of keeping. Now, in response to a lot of the questions to the professionals around this issue, they have said, well, none of that will really be visible, baloney. The lot next to the subject property at 702 Fourth is empty, which means that entire side of the building, when you are walking up the street or driving up the street, will be visible to pedestrians, and it will surely be visible to all of us, the immediately surrounding neighbors to this property. Uh, there was testimony today that this project is going to benefit the community. If it's going to benefit the community, then I would ask you to all wonder why every single surrounding neighbor is here asking you to oppose this application. If it provided benefits, surely there would be somebody here, a neighbor, to say that so, and there's nobody here to say that because it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickard.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Pickard?
I do not.
Hearing none, uh, let's get the next commenter.
Who's next, AP TV?
Edward Baumgartner, 706 Fourth Avenue.
Mr. Baumgartner, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly, thank you very much, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and your address once again, and then we'll start the clock.
Edward Baumgartner, 706 Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, um, I am in wholehearted agreement with, um, Mr. Hunt and Mr. Pickard, um, and I'm sure the others that follow. I'm in great opposition of the, of, of, of this project, um, it's, um, to, it, it, it is not only not of benefit to our immediate area or the city of Asbury Park, it is only of benefit to the owners, and I think everything that is designed kind of goes in that, in, in that fashion. Um, there has been a lot of mischaracterizations and misinformation that has been put forth by the, um, the attorney on, on, on the project and some of the testimony, there are a lot of assumptions that have been made that are not true, because these are people that are not of the area, and they don't really know what is over there. They are assuming things in their favor. Um, it is a fam- it is a neighborhood of single-family wood frame residences. Um, this is an apartment building, uh, I believe in a townho- in a townhome style that is inconsistent with everything else around it, and again, goes in an opposite direction of where Asbury Park, uh, has been heading in the past 15 years since I've been there. Um, the character of making the entire backyard, side and backyard a parking lot is not in character with the neighborhood and goes directly against what everything else on the block is. Uh, there are problems with the, the, um, the density i- issue, the, uh, the number of residences, the number of rooms. We are going from a five-bedroom to bath, one-family house to the proposed three-family, nine-bedroom, six-bathroom house. Uh, that isn't, that's a vast increase in density that honestly neither the lot nor the neighborhood can support. Um, I implore the zoning board to reject all aspects of this variance, um, and, uh, our, because our community has worked hard and long to reduce the number of absentee landlords of which this would fall into and multifamily dwellings. It would be a huge step backwards to allow anything of this sort to go through. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Are there any questions for Mr. Baumgartner?
Hearing none, let's move on to the next commenter.
Hello, Peter Connolly, 710 Fourth Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Connolly, please raise your right hand.
Raised.
Thank you, do you solemnly swear the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, you've already stated your name and your address, you may begin.
Thank you, board members, for hearing my testimony. I'm in opposition to this project. To me, the word of the evening is variance, and while it's admittedly a high school trope for me to define, I'm going to do so. Variance is defined as the fact or quality of being different, divergent, or inconsistent. For my mind, a variance should be considered when the project is going to improve the overall quality of the neighborhood and/or its residents. Take for instance, Arbar, which is under construction on Main Street just south of Fourth Avenue. This project also called for variances, mostly parking. While personally, I'm not thrilled about the prospect of having a bar with late hours and live music surrounding my property on two sides, I can still see the benefits to the community. A project like Arbar ostensibly improves the commercial district on Main Street, thereby improving the neighborhood and the services to the residents. For this project, I'm hard-pressed to understand how it materially benefits the neighborhood or its residents. Perhaps the argument could be that this project is providing additional housing, but we have four units available in a new build on Main and Fourth, and we have 100-plus unit middle-income building going up on Fourth and Sunset. I don't think we're hard-pressed for an additional one or two units in this direct neighborhood. After attending all of these meetings, I am struck by two opposing forces. On the one hand, the property owners, and on the other hand, their neighbors. Houses in Asbury Park are close together. Neighbors learn things about each other they may not have directly exposed. Recently, my neighbor Joel made a comment about my singing, which I hadn't, which I hadn't shared with him directly. But again, houses are close together. This project is not being erected in an open field surrounded by green trees as the renders would suggest. Instead, it's being erected in a neighbor, in a neighborhood, with neighbors who will come to know you, will understand if you sing from time to time, even if you haven't shared that with them, and they will hopefully pull your trash cans off the street when you're out of town. But good neighbors require the building of good relationships. I had hoped through these meetings, the developers would have seen the conflict and would have considered a path towards creating good neighbor relations. A stately one-family home would no doubt be a fruitful investment on this lot, and a two-family could still easily fit within the look and feel of the neighborhood. Instead, the developers have opted to squeeze as much profit out of this law as humanly possible. Nay, they have asked the board to approve the variances so that they may directly profit with little consideration towards improving the neighborhood. I urge the board to deny this request for the variances of this project. Yes, our new neighbors will be disappointed, but in time, perhaps they will see my intention was only in the community's best interest. I want so badly for Asbury Park to continue to be a collection of neighbors filled with, um, caring neighbors who reach out, help out, and even sometimes hear you singing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Connolly? Hearing none, let's move on to the next person to comment on this application.
Joel Cohen, 708 Fourth Avenue.
Cohen, please raise your right hand.
Raised.
Thank you, do you solemnly swear testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and what's your address again on Fourth?
708.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate the zoning board's patience and attention to detail for this application. It's not lost on the, the community here. But I am vehemently opposed, uh, to, to, uh, approving this application. This is a community that's in development, I'm not a developer, I'm not in real estate, and I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a homeowner that's had a dream of living in Asbury Park and want to make sure that the surroundings remain as they are as we purchased our home. But I, unfortunately, this application appears to be, have presented in bad faith, in my opinion. Every expert has had multiple issues with their analysis, be it not checking out the quality of the dirt, not checking the water runoff, there's been misleading renderings, drawings and plans, multiple changes at every step of this process that I've been aware of, let alone those that I'm not aware of. And the issues have had to been raised by the public, questioning these experts, not by Mr. Suntory, not by the owners, and not by the experts themselves. So what are we missing that, that we haven't raised ourselves that might be detrimental to the neighbors, the neighborhood, and the plans for Asbury Park? Just as some examples, the water, the drainage below ground that's never been tested, or the parking lots rather than dirt or lawn to absorb the rain, not being there for any of the storms or for real issues of flooding. The lighting, the idea that the homes around will have lights shining in their windows, shining on their porches and in their yards from the outdoor decks and from the front porches and from the parking lot lights. Droppage of light on, on other, on other people's property just doesn't sound good, and it certainly ruins the character of the neighborhood. Garbage was raised, there were no clear plans for maintenance. Imagine three families putting out garbage all at once in front of one home, that's a very small and narrow property. There's no industrial garbage removal, there isn't room for it. It'll be an eyesore for the entire neighborhood and certainly for us, our neighbors. Parking. Three families, certainly more than one and a half cars, there'll be extra cars. The Hannids have agreed to live there, but they have an SUV that wouldn't even fit in the lot, how ridiculous is this? There's obvious disapproval from every neighbor on the block. You've seen that at every meeting, we've stood here, and there are 10 more that stand behind us. No one wants this. At every step of the process, we've asked the plans for the townhomes, which is what they are, even though they're not technically that, that's what they are. We've asked that at every step, the townhomes be exchanged for a home, for a regular home that looks like the rest of them. All of the testimony has shown that that's what the character of the, of the block is. If anyone did a real thorough check of the character, you would see that that's what it is. But you failed to do that. And so now, there's going to be these three units that are going to change the neighborhood. We just asked that you build a house, a nice big house, make your money, don't ruin the block, and I please implore the board to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cohen?
Nicole.
Sorry.
Sorry. What was that?
I, I think Dan was saying, don't forget about Nicole, maybe?
Nicole?
Oh, never mind. Wasn't that the woman at the beginning that spoke?
No, that was Lauren Scheller.
That was Lauren Scheller.
Sorry, uh-huh, long day.
Okay.
Okay, so no, seeing no questions for Mr. Cohen. Um, AP TV, do we have any other raised hands?
Yes. Hello, my name is Chuck Habrel.
Mr. Habrel, please raise your right hand.
I do.
Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your address for us, please.
Uh, I live at, uh, 703 Fourth Avenue.
Great, uh, you may proceed.
Uh, thank you very much. It, I was hesitant to comment because I feel that I have so little to add to what all of my neighbors have said in opposition to this project. I feel very much as they do, uh, against approving this, a- as a neighbor and as someone whose life will be directly affected by this. Uh, the truth is, I grew up here in Asbury. I was born at Jersey Shore Medical Center. Uh, my family has lived here, my great-grandfather built a house on this very same street, Fourth Avenue. And, uh, I left, like so many people, in 1994, thinking never I would ever return. Uh, but I saw how the neighborhood has changed, I, I saw how it changed for the better, thanks in large part to the efforts of concerned civic advocates such as yourself. And I can't help but think, having returned here, uh, what was it, four or five years ago, we purchased this home from John Pickard and the lot adjacent. Uh, and at that time, it was basically an abandoned shell of a house, it had been broken into. The copper tubing had been pulled from the walls, there was no water or heat. And we made it into a home, a, a home for a single family, I and my spouse. And that has been the trajectory that this neighborhood has been taking for years. I've seen it in all the neighbors who came before me, I've seen it in the neighbors who came after me. We've all had a single goal in mind, which is to beautify this neighborhood and make it the best that Asbury Park has to offer. And for that reason, I can't help but think that this project, which is directly opposite my home, is a step in the wrong direction, it's a step back to Asbury Park in the time when I and my family left. And I would hate to see us go in that direction once again. Uh, so I strongly encourage you, uh, to consider granting these, to consider against granting these variances and to keep the character of the neighborhood what it is today, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Habrel. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Habrel? Seeing none. Can we move on to the next public commenter?
Yes?
Okay, I assume that's Werner Baumgartner.
Greetings, Jack.
Okay, Werner, please raise your right hand.
Shoot.
You solemnly swear the testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and your specific address on Fourth.
Werner Baumgartner, City Historian, 402 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My question here is, what is the character of the neighborhood? Uh, to really understand that, we need to look at the history of the evolution of the housing stock here. The building lots are typically uniform, 50 by 150 is very, very typical and very standard. And there's usually a house in the front and a separate house in the back on many properties, I don't know if this particular block exhibits that, but that's a historic pattern of development through the residential areas of the east side of Asbury. A primary home in the front facing the street and a secondary carriage house or garage with a residential unit above at the rear. This building is just way too much building for this size lot. A traditional construction such as I just described would afford two units in a very comfortable space, um, that would fit into the neighborhood very nicely. There are certain other design characteristics that are very common in the residential neighborhoods of Asbury, and that is front porches. Front porches averaging from eight to 10 feet in depth. The porch on this house seems like just a, a nod to having a deck with a cover on it. It is way too shallow, it is not consistent with porches in the residential neighborhood. Roof lines are extremely important also. The community design standards specify an acute gable, which is a gable angle of less than 90 degrees. It specifies a porch consistent with other porches, and I take that to mean the depth should be consistent. Um, rectilinear design is a design paradigm of Asbury Park. The curve proposed in the front end of the driveway does not match anything else that I've seen around Asbury's residential neighborhoods, that driveway should be straightened out. There are other design issues regarding lighting. The lighting choices, the fixtures are very poor and create a lot of glare and a lot of spillage out into the public realm and into neighboring properties. So all in all, this lot, you know, should be and could be developed. However, what's presented is not at all consistent with the character of either this neighborhood or the historic evolution of Asbury Park's residential neighborhoods immediately surrounding this area. Furthermore, the community design regulations govern this particular development, they are mandatory. R2 zone is a dedicated historic district. This is the bare minimum standards that Asbury has to protect its historic housing stock. A porch consistent with others in the neighborhood, an acute gable angle roof, and also no side primary entrance doors. This building has two primary entrance doors that face a side yard. That is prohibited in new construction in the R2 historic district. So I think this needs to be worked on. I'd like to see this site developed, but it should be developed more in character and more in keeping with, uh, what the standards are that are published in the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Baumgartner? Seeing nobody. AP TV, please bring up the next public commenter. AP TV, please bring up the next public commenter.
Hi, my name is Lauren Scheller. I live on seven oh eight Fourth Ave.
Okay, Lauren, please raise your right hand.
Raised.
Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you've already stated your address. I thank you very much. The floor is yours.
I am here to testify in strong opposition to the proposed variances. My husband and I and our two children brought this, bought this property with our life savings and we've devoted tremendous time and resources to update the home and the landscaping. I've participated in every step of this process along with the board and I take this very seriously. Because of all the work and sweat that we, my family and the rest of the block have put into updating our homes, the developer is able to build these apartments and charge the rent that they would want exactly because of the resources we have devoted to make this a desirable block, while at the same time ignoring the desire of us, the neighborhood, the neighbors, who created a neighborhood that would make this a lucrative project. We've heard much testimony from the developer that they have made changes that the board has asked, but not changes based on what the neighbors have asked. I had hoped that the developers would hear us throughout this process, but they have not and even used the word, quote, squeeze, end quote, the structure onto the property. And that is sadly what's happening. The variances are required because this structure is in fact being squeezed and that squeezing requires that my child's bedrooms will look out into a busy parking lot and a garbage structure and have to hear the accompanying noise and light. There are multiple things that have been presented in bad faith, like in our first meeting that this was affordable housing, that there's not a third bedroom, even though with the full bath and enclosed space, we know that this will very well, very well be used in that manner, as well as miscategorization of lighting, noise and landscaping. Yes, the zone can legally permit a three-unit, three, three-unit housing structure with a parking lot, but the variances sought to make this work in this space. I'm sorry, but the variances are being sought to make this work in a space where it's being squeezed in a, on a block where the neighbors do not want it. I, I want to reiterate that this has been a long time dream of my family to live in Asbury Park and we chose this neighborhood for the potential that we saw in the surrounding properties in our own home and for the appreciation of the work that's been done for the neighbors that existed before we were there. And so once again, I'm strongly opposed to the proposed variances and I ask that the board hear us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scheller. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Scheller? Seeing none.
I have a question. Sorry. From Ms. Scheller. Is she on the side where the upstairs balconies are proposed?
I am not. I'm on the side where our second story windows look over into where the parking lot would be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for Ms. Scheller? All right, AP TV, please call the next person.
Gerard Bohm.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Have you done so?
Yes.
You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell it for the record and your address, please.
Gerard Bohm, B O H M, seven hundred Fourth Avenue.
Thank you very much.
I'm opposed to what's being planned for this, for our neighboring lot. I live on seven hundred on the lot that the balcony is faced on. I bought the house when it was a total wreck. It was a group home for many, many years. It was boarded up. It had intruders. Everything inside the house was gutted and stolen and we restored it back to the way it was in eighteen eighty-eight. And we're very concerned about changing the character to neighbor. We now have a single family house and we do a lot of landscaping. There are a lot of money put into the, making the gardens nice and I do not think this property next door is in keeping with our property. Thank you.
Do you have any further testimony, Mr. Bohm?
That's all, sir.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bohm? Seeing none. AP TV, please call the next person.
Mr. Teo.
Hi.
Sir, please raise your right hand.
It's done.
Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony about the given this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it and give us your address.
My name is Jit Teo, spelled J I T. Last name is T E O and I live in seven oh three Fourth Avenue. We are the house that's directly opposite the project.
Thank you.
And I'm here just to stand in solidarity with all of my neighbors to firmly oppose the project. They have pretty much said all that I wanted to say, so I don't really have much to add, but I just want to voice my firm opposition to the project. We bought this place in two thousand and fourteen and it was a three-family home. As Charles mentioned earlier, it was a complete wreck. It was a three-family home and we, it took us three years and a lot of resources, time and effort to completely restore it. A few of our other neighbors, seven hundred Fourth Avenue, seven oh one Fourth Avenue, those were also multi, multi-home projects. And we have spoken with them over the years and we all have a lot of shared stories about what a nightmare it was to restore the wreck that our homes were into what they are today. One of the few remaining homes in the, in, in the street is right next to us. I believe it's seven oh five Fourth Avenue. It's a four-family home. It's an absentee landlord and the place is still terribly maintained. You can't get, you can't get landlord to do anything. It's all about maximizing profits. Spend as little money as you can and get as much rent as you can. And then looking at all of the plans for this project, it just kind of brought back really bad memories when, you know, we first bought the place and came into this house and it was divided into so many rooms. Every little space was meeting into a living space and it's all in an effort to make extra rent. And this is just what is reminding, reminding me of. And for all of these reasons and also for some of the testimonies, which I find really suspect, for example, equating the second floor outdoor spaces with indoor bay window rooms is just pretty disingenuous. And there are also some safety concerns that I had earlier. The driveway is really narrow. It doesn't have a sidewalk and all of the apartments in this, on all of the townhouses have side entrances and exits that walk, that walk out directly into the driveway. So I am firmly opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teo. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Teo? Seeing none or hearing none. Do we have anyone else in the public that wishes, wish to make a comment? Okay, it appears to public comment. I'll make a motion to close public comments.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Santori, your opportunity to sum up.
Thank you so much. I certainly appreciate all of the board's time and the professionals' time and the analysis that's been taken. Obviously, the public has participated vehemently throughout the process and it's part of the process. They have every right within which to have their opinions considered. And I think that a couple of key points, obviously, I don't want to belabor things. This is a very educated board that has a lot of astuteness to it and I appreciate the diligence through all the different hours of testimony, but first and foremost, once again, we're not seeking to use variance and this concept that we're ramming a density that's not permitted or doing something that's not permitted is is really, you know, the words they use of disingenuous and how my client is to be characterized as some landlord who's looking to sow benefits that they've reaped, whatever the case may be. It's, it's, it's really out of pace. My client is a very upstanding individual who everything he touches and does is done with great pride and, and great enduring character and quality. So I think that what we've done throughout this process is we've tried to listen to the board astutely and its professionals, whether it was in coming back with a redesign in accordance with a lot of Ms. Miller's comments as it pertained to porches and lines and different things. And, and we, we spent the money and we did that. We shrunk the building. We changed the parking to pervious pavers. We went out and did more analysis as it pertained to just the pervious pavers and, and the runoff and everything that we've done in every step of the way has been done in reaction and step. It's not done to confuse the neighbors or to trick the neighbors or to do anything. It's just been done in response to try and build a project that is going to be in keeping with some of the board's questions and concerns. And obviously, my client has the ability to use his property and, and the variances that we're seeking in a totality in the big scheme of things are fairly de minimis. A, a small variance in coverage and obviously a few waivers as it pertains to some things that really deal with parking lot designs when you talk about parking lots per se and interior landscaping. The amount of landscaping that's going to be put on this property, the architectural design of the property, the overall separation of the property and improvement from how it's going to be located on the lot as it pertains to where it currently sits. I, I recognize that everything seemingly that we're doing is, is apparently very offensive to the neighborhood, but I struggle with that. And I struggle with that because when I look at what we're doing, I see a fantastic new building where my client's making a huge investment into the community. My client is not from outer space or somewhere else. He's, he's from the shore. He's grew up in and around Asbury Park. He loves Asbury Park. That's why he bought a home here. And everybody's story about what they bought it and what they did with it and how they did it, I appreciate those stories, but they're their stories. They're their properties. They're their rights. And my guy has his right, his property and his use. And what he's seeking to do is build this property for his family and for his use. And I can assure you that, you know, while people are concerned where the garbage bins may be and all these other things that may come into play, my client runs a tight ship. Bottom line. I've known him for a long time and he does everything of high quality. So I would just certainly ask that the board take into consideration all of the changes that we've made and the fact that the variances that we're seeking in the big scheme of things are actually fairly minimal in the, you know, when it comes to talking about whether it's coverage or anything else, these are not grave departures. And as Mr. Leff kind of pointed out, and I know there was some contention relative to is this porch concept and how it creates. So yes, by covering the porch, we alleviate one minimal request for a variance, but by the same token, we're creating an architectural design element that it was kind of key in Ms. Miller's report. So when we do that, then we create another variance and that really is the large driving force behind pushing coverage over and above in this circumstance. When we talk about these decks, the thing that strikes me that I just don't quite understand, and I live in a residential community and, you know, as many of us do, when I'm in my backyard, I look at my neighbor's backyard and when I'm walking down the street, I see other people on their front porches. I don't quite understand the concept of how offensive it is to have two people on the side of a deck on the side of a property and who that bothers. And how is it bother anyone differently than if two people are on their front porch? I don't understand how that impacts anything other than the fact that the overriding and overreaching comment is very simply this, the neighbors don't want it. And it's any potential theoretical excuse that makes no sense, as if they saw a person that's an offensive element to have someone outside at their property. I, I just don't buy it other than pure objection for objection sake. And I think that having someone sitting out on a deck in an open space at the shore, having a cup of coffee in the morning for ten minutes is not an offensive use of a property. It's not burdening anyone. As far as all of the issues and concerns and things that they say that we misguided or otherwise, whatever element of approval, whether it pertains to finalizing driveway details or specifically lighting, which we spent a lot of time on, all of those items and elements, we are certainly have no issue with working in great conjunction with your professionals in the engineering department to ensure that we're in compliance. We have no desire to create spillage or deterioration, but no different than when I turn on my front porch light or my neighbor turns on theirs. It's a light and you see it. And I don't know how that bothers someone, but we're not looking to point spotlights into people's houses. Certainly that's not the intention. So I think that at the end of the day, whatever minor adjustments that need to be made as it pertains to fulfilling some standard obligations, they all can be made with the engineering department and we certainly will work in great cooperation and conjunction. So at this time, I would just request that the board approve the application as submitted and grant the variance relief that we seek.
Thank you, Mr. Santori.
Thank you.
So at this point, we're going to come to, I guess, get some comments back from the board. So I will ask.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one point, please?
Please.
Okay. Does anybody under, does anyone have any question about what law applies here?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, it's more for building code, which Jack, you might know better. I know that there's been some concern about that third room, the den, being a bedroom. Isn't that something that the building code like will give a certificate for how many people can actually occupy?
It'll give, there'll be a proof for how many bedrooms, but other than that, I don't know about COs, about how many people are allowed to occupy a home. That, that gets into some very sticky issues. But as far as it, it, the CO that's issued would be for a two-bedroom or whatever, however many are technically bedrooms. The other room would not be permitted to be used as a bedroom. And if you like, there could always be a condition, if you wanted to add a condition in, if you were to approve it, that you would want a deed restriction indicating that, that, that room would not, those spare rooms would not be used as bedrooms.
I don't know about the board, but I, I think that, I don't know, Donna, do you have anything to add about COs?
Hi, Donna here. Brittany, are you concerned that because of the way it's shown on the floor plan, it could be modified in the future?
Yes.
And become a bed, and become a bedroom?
Yes.
Okay. So theoretically, if one of the occupants wanted to convert that space, yeah, they would have to go for a building permit. They have to get a zoning permit first. They would have to calculate things. You know, there's, that's the process. You know, there's hypotheticals that, yeah, if they just, you know, use the space as a bedroom, they could use it as a bedroom. But, you know, there's, there are no restrictions on how many bedrooms you can have in a dwelling unit. It's calculated by, you know, window area, floor space, closet area, things like that, that the building department would review. So you know, and I would caution trying to put a condition on any approval as to how many bedrooms that each dwelling unit could have that could be construed as, you know, exclusionary, you know, federal housing law kind of problem. So.
And right now that zone is, what does the R2 allow? What does the R2 allow?
It, it doesn't regulate bedrooms. We don't regulate bedrooms and zoning.
Okay.
The only thing that bedrooms trigger are how many parking spaces in residential use. Um, and you know, if we lived in a different area, yeah, anywhere on septic. And it governed how large a septic field you'd need. Um. But yeah, we don't, we don't regulate how many bedrooms a dwelling unit can have.
Okay, thank you.
You are, the R2 zone permits up to four, four units.
Okay.
For dwelling units, but it can have, you could have four bedrooms in each of those.
She asked the question. I'm just giving her the direct answer to the question.
So can we proceed now?
Yes, as long as no one has any question about what law is to be applied. Okay.
Well, this is not a use variance. I want to remind everybody, this is not a use variance. This is a permitted use in this district. You have to keep that in mind, so um. Let's start with. Tim, do you have any comments either regarding this application? You have to unmute yourself, Tim. Unmute yourself. Oh, you can't?
My audio, there we go. I have trouble with computers. Um. I. I don't have any questions or comments at this point. I just. I'm having trouble with this one. That's, I don't know. Let someone else speak.
Okay. Brittany, do you have any comments in regards to this application?
Yes, of course I do. Um, so. It's interesting because I was looking up the zone on the, in the master plan. And I know a lot of the residents um nearby said that, you know, this is supposed to be single family. Um, or, you know, geared towards single family. However, I want to make it on record that this zone also calls. For an increase in maximum building coverage from 25 to 30%. So I think we have to weigh that with, yes, single families, you know, what they want to go towards, what the master plan wants to go towards, but they also want to increase. Building coverage, which. That would be under what this application. This app, application will be under the, what is, you know, going to be required. I, I don't know. I'm struggling with that and also you're right, it's not a use variance. They could create this property. And the fact that they have worked with Donna and Jason's recommendations. To make it blend in with the neighborhood more, um, and they are only over 1%. I, I hear what the neighbors are saying and I sympathize and I do disagree with. Tori that the balconies do raise a lot of. Problems for residents nearby because then. People can see into your windows and we've come back, you know, this has been an issue on the board. Multiple times about having balconies on the second floor. Um, however, I do think the site. Does, and I do have some lists, if we do approve it, of some things I would like implemented to help. You know, keep that, the privacy of the neighbors, but overall, um, I do support. This application where it's at now.
Thank you, Brittany. Jill.
So like everybody else, I am struggling with this as well. Um, I do have to commend the applicant for working with the board, hearing the comments. I want to let the public know, we heard you, we understand your struggles with this as well. Um. But at this point. That 1% and the amount of work that went into revising it. I'm in favor of this application at this point, but it's a struggle. That's all I have.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jill. Mr. Harris, do you have any um comments in regards to the application?
Yeah, I respect the fact that the gentleman has been working diligently with the city and. Everything we have asked him to do, they have done. Um, so, and he, he's not operating. Outside the law, it is still an R2 area. Regardless of the fact that it will eventually become a one or one area. So he's not breaking the law. You know? And I hate to turn people who are correctly investing in the city. Away because Lord, the city needs more good landlords and not horrible landlords. So um, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Dan. Ms. Minervini.
My God, I, I am really struggling with this one as well and I, I could probably. Echo my colleagues on the board. Um. I know that. I really wish it was just a two-family and it fit a little bit more in with what's happening and. What happens, you know, with some of the other um neighborhoods are like, um, but I know that that's not the variant, so. Um. I don't have a huge problem with the balconies. I mean, some of the old houses do have balconies up at the top that face the side. I live next door to one of them. But um. Um, and I really, really do appreciate the applicant. Working with, with all of us and all the comments that have been going back and forth. I really, I agree with Jill. I am, I, I hear. What the neighbors are saying and. I, I, I don't, I. I, I. I guess I'd have to support it based on what they're asking for. Um, but I, I do know I would probably feel the same way and I'm. Um, Mr. Santora, I, I appreciate what you, what you said about your, your client. Um. And I don't know if they're living here full-time or not, but um. I really wish that they. Your client would have worked a little closer with the neighbors before even getting to this point, but I, but I guess that's neither here nor there. So um, but those are just my comments.
Thank you, Kitty. And finally, Mr. Gonzalez.
Um. It's a tough one, this one, actually. Um. I do sympathize with the neighbors and I understand the uh their concerns and why not. But I also heard the neighbor saying that they bought the units as a three-family and they, it was their choice to turn it into a one-family. Um. The applicant is not breaking the law and. I'm kind of in favor of this application, actually. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Christopher. So finally, in my, my own personal opinion, um, I have struggled with this application as well. Um, uh, from my point of view. Uh, a single family is always nice and I'm, I sympathize with the neighbors greatly. And I understand their objections. Um, but for the, the fact that this is not a use variance. That this is a permitted use in this, on this particular property. That the variances are not really outrageous. That I unfortunately cannot agree with. The neighbors on this application and am in favor of it. So based on that. In hearing and in agreeing with all my colleagues on the board. Um. I think we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Uh, this, this application, I'm sorry, the address, I know it's 703 Fourth.
704.
Fourth.
Fourth Avenue.
704.
I have a couple of things you might want to consider about conditions.
Yes.
Yes, please, Jack.
The time.
Especially the lighting, making sure that there's no spillage whatsoever. Uh, Donna, do we need a photometric report on that? Would that make sense to, for that condition? You're, you're muted.
That would be the.
Jason on that, um.
Or Jason?
Yeah.
That would be the only way to measure it.
Okay, good, okay. Okay, compliance with the outstanding conditions in Jason's report are usually their. Last meeting, the engineer went through a number of comments and I have yes in many places. Jason, do you have any additional? Issues regarding your report or outstanding issues from an engineering perspective that I should address? Now?
Uh, nothing beyond um. What's been discussed. I just have one point of clarification. I apologize if, if maybe I. Missed this part. Um, the most recent plans. Uh, I got so many PDFs open. Uh, here it is. The most recent plan and testimony from the last time, and I think one of the letters from the applicants engineer mentioned that pervious pavement would be installed. Um, and there's conflicting notes about what kind. There's a grass pave detail on the plan and then there's a comment about permeable pavers. Can we get clarification on what is being proposed?
Sure. Um, Matt, you're on the call? Yes, no?
I don't want to open this up.
No, no, I'm just, I, I mean, I could just come from clarification. I was going to let him say what it was, but.
No, 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 no. Mr. Santori, no, no, no.
Okay, Jason, Jason, let's, let's, let's craft something here that will work for you. I don't want to start and.
No, we cannot begin again.
No, no. What, what do you need, Jason?
So the intention then is that there's going to be pervious pavement uh for the parking area. Uh, this is what I'm saying, for the parking area, not the driveway segment, but the parking area in the back.
Okay.
Um, we, I, I'm okay evaluating what they're proposing to make sure that the water gets into the ground, so I, I suppose. If you put uh pervious pavement required for the parking area, I can handle.
Be reviewed and approved by you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, and then the outstanding. Donna, anything in your report that is still outstanding that needs to be addressed?
Just, I guess the, the street trees, uh, make sure, um.
Okay, we, we have to have the environmental safety committee get involved.
The type and if there's a contribution required based on the health of the existing.
Agreed.
Okay. Brittany, that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then a few, few more from the planning report. Um, I'm not sure if this was discussed, so I apologize if it was, but wheel stops, did we ever decide?
Yes.
Okay, so those are in.
Yeah, I think that's in the record though. Is that correct?
It should be, yeah, because I brought it up.
Okay. And then I know there is the turning radius, so I'm like with storm water, can we defer to Jason to confirm?
Yes, he's going to take care, he'll take care of those details. And Mr. Santori indicated that there was a revised plan for 10, up to 10 years uh storm situation. So that, that will be worked out. That's probably all in Jason's report. So we make a condition on compliance with his report.
Okay, and then um, I, I heard photometric plan. Can you put something in there about how the, the lights cannot be taller than 16 feet per the planner's report?
Cannot be. Uh, Donna? Has that been taken care of by in the plans that the lighting fixtures are at the height, maximum height that you permitted?
I mean, I'm trying to recall. I believe that was what is the specified height on the plans.
Yeah.
That's what they have to come conform to when they build it.
All right, okay. All right.
And then one last question, what did we decide about planning? Is there going to be a buffer strip? Planning lot, parking lot planning?
That's all.
That's already been.
Okay, sorry, it's been a long time, so just.
No, no, it's a lot of meetings, I get it.
Yeah, okay, and I'm good.
Okay, uh, so, and of course sewer connection fees, there's a few standard ones that I'll put in usual. So we have a motion by Brittany. Do we have a second with the?
Second.
Uh, Christopher Avalon? And before we vote, uh, the exhibit that was up from the planner, the uh, the videos for the various members were covering the upper right-hand corner. Was that marked as an exhibit?
I didn't see if it was marked, actually, Jack.
Let's designate that as AA1 with today's date, just to make sure.
Mr. Santori, can you?
We'll make that AA1.
I can, I, I note that it was in the submission to the town. I didn't, I don't have it up and see what it was.
If it's already been marked by the staff, that's fine. If it hasn't, I want to get it marked as AA1 with today's date. Okay, all right, that being said, um. We have a motion by Brittany and a second by Christopher Avalon, one second. I gotta do the secretarial work here. Christopher Avalon. Which I'm not very good at. Irene is much, much better than I'll ever be. Okay, let's, let's have a roll call vote uh with those conditions. Daniel Harris? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. I couldn't hear you. Uh, Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Reluctantly, yes.
Catherine Minervini?
Yes.
Uh. Russell Lewis is accused. Christopher Avaloni?
Yes.
All affirmative votes, application approved.
Thank you, everyone, and I appreciate all your time and attention to this and thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, Mr. Santori, Mr. Hannah. And thank you to the board.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I have nothing further uh from my perspective, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jack. Everyone, have a good night. I'll make a motion.
I have something to say. Uh, Jack, I just sent the paper that you asked to uh Michelle and Mark.
Okay.
Okay.
Send me a copy?
This one?
Yes. Yeah, can you send me a copy as well?
Sure, yeah.
And then I've, that's your signature on that document you just held up, correct?
Yes, it is.
All right, so then I can, I can, I can take it, okay. I'm good, thank you.
Are we good?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eyes have it, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.